I ask everyone to please rise for the singing of our national anthem. Thank you, please be seated. All right, item 1.0 is additions to the agenda. That was so good, let's do it again. Any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, I have been advised that the delegation under 5.1 and the related request decision item on 7.1 will not be present today, and so I take a motion to delete those two items from the agenda. Counselor Shuler, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. 2.0, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Sorry, oh, I'll go to Counselor Long. All in favor? That is carried. Item 3.0, corrections or amendments to the March 9, 2016 regular meeting of Council Minutes? Anything? No. Item 4.0, adoption of the March 9, 2016 regular meeting of Council Minutes. Counselor Bossert, all in favor? That is carried. Item 5.0 is delegations. 5.2, the 2016 Triathlon Organizing Committee? There we go. Good morning.
Good morning. Sharon O'Keefe and I guess myself are representing the 2016 triathlon for Drayton Valley. We are requesting some road closures a little bit more extensively than we have in the past for hopefully the safety of all concerned, and that's why we're here today to ask about that and to let you know how the triathlon is going to run this year. It's a little bit different. I'll let Sharon explain that.
The reason that we'd like the roads closed is that we are putting kids on bikes out on the road, and that doesn't mix well with vehicle traffic. We are trying to get it done by noon so that we are just going to be out on the roads in the morning. We are also going to do for the older kids, instead of having them go out on the Ring Road like we did last year, we're going to do laps. So they will be doing two laps down 48th Street to 55th Avenue, I don't know what was the amount distributed. Yeah, and then up to 50th Avenue and down to the Ring Road where they'll turn around. We're aware that there are a few driveways that will need to be monitored and people notified, and yeah, basically, we just want everything to be safe. We're hoping that you're on board with that.
Refresh my memory, in the past, the road closure, particularly 50th Avenue because that's a major roadway, was that entire road closed previously? It was just a partial?
It was a controlled close.
Yeah, right.
We would let cars through when there was no kids through, but we had a couple of issues last year where cars and kids got a little too close because people weren't controlling it quite as well as they could have.
I see.
So that was part of the issue. And now that, excuse me, the extension of Beckett is open, that you can go out the other way, that gives us more access for Aspenview people to get out of Aspenview through that exit that way.
Right. Okay, so the entire road will be closed?
From 50th Street to Ring Road. I mean, from 43rd Street to Ring Road.
Right. Okay, you're right. Okay. Any questions? Counselor Bossert?
Thank you, ladies, for coming in. My question is similar to the mayor's. I see that there's an extension of Beckett that you would like to have closed, and an extension of 55th Avenue that you'd like to close. I don't suspect that's part of the loop, it's just part of rerouting traffic away from where children would be? Okay, and they would be also controlled closures, not complete closures?
The ones on 50th, the one you're talking about on 55th that goes into towards Aurora Schools, that one you referred to, we would let those people know that they wouldn't have to go out the other way, out to.
Okay.
Anything further? Counselor Shuler?
Thank you. I'm actually really glad to see this, because I was at last year's, I think it was last year, maybe it was the year before, triathlon where, you know, had the controlled closures, and, yeah, there were a couple instances where I felt we had especially children at risk. So I'm really happy to see, you know, a complete closure of this route, just for the sake of safety, especially for the children, but for all participants. So I'm glad to see this come forward.
Thank you. Yes, a lot of triathlons in the province are going this way now. Red Deer just announced that their roads will be closed, and Edmonton's is closed for their two triathlons too. So it's, I think it's important, safety-wise, and also so that the insurance companies are happy to. They don't specify it, but I'm sure one day it'll come to them.
Now, did I hear you correctly at the beginning where you were saying you hope the road closure can be lifted by noon?
That's our goal. It depends on the number of participants.
So in terms of timing, I understand in the past, normally the adults go and then the Kids of Steel go, and that's what makes it run into the afternoon. So how is that going to be compressed?
We are going to hopefully start at 8:00 and run the kids first. We have shorter distances, so it'll be over faster. And then we will run the adults afterwards, and without a break. We used to have a break.
See, adults can sleep in. That's awesome.
Well, no, the plan is that adults can come from other communities because we have such a beautiful course for our triathlon.
That's right. Anything else? All right, thank you very much. Item 5.3, we have the RCP statistics from Sergeant Delisle. Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, and good morning, Council. Yes, I'm here to present the statistics for, these are new forms, I'm not familiar with the ones I used to have. The previous ones, looks like it's for January and February. So looking at the numbers, just to give you an idea of the call volume that we go up to the two months, I ran 2015, and for January and February, we took 429 complaints. This year, we took 503, so outstanding wins more for two months, which is not that much more. So if we look at the statistics themselves, the first thing I would like to point out is central assaults. If we look at the number of 2016 compared to the other years, we had six reported to us compared to 1, 0, 1, 3. I actually looked at every single one of them to see what was going on there. Two were historical that were brought up to us during that time. One was a young female, 14 years old, deeply in love with a 20-year-old male. Unfortunately, it's illegal, so we had to address that. The other one was a case of inappropriate touching, and the last one, oh yes, do have to be at one of that. So they were all situations where people were touched, or things inappropriate were done that fall under the sexual categories, but nothing where someone was caught in that alley, or a violence or whatever was done. But unfortunately, it's still six cases that we had to investigate. The good news is on the assault side, we see a downtrend. We're really pleased to see this, that the assaults are down. With that being said, we're seeing an increase in family dispute complaints being reported to us. Luckily, they are all not violence. A lot of them are child custody issues or things like this, disagreement, verbal conflict. Glad to see that it doesn't go too violent, and glad to see that our assaults are down because with the times now, you know, you're being a little bit difficult and people losing your job, we were suspecting to see a little bit more violence between couples and stuff like that, but right now, it's not being reflected, so that's good. A slight increase in brick enters, theft under, significant increase of theft under. Again, I looked at those, at pretty much all of them. For two months, we had 53 complaints. 26 of them were from vehicles, ranging from change being stolen from inside vehicles. A lot were license plates being taken from motor vehicles, license plates being stolen. Eight were shoplifting. That's a little bit high. Usually, I don't get shoplifting complaints, but I guess it would be common that these people try to steal a few things. All the other ones were, like, there was a backpack that was stolen from a hotel, someone lost a purse, a phone was stolen from a restaurant table, things like this, petty thefts. And if we move to the next page, the other number that was standing up a little bit was the municipal backlog, almost doubling what we used to see. The reason for this is now that we have the new false alarm backlog, we're starting to issue a little bit more tickets towards this. We still give warnings to the companies and the businesses and the private residents saying, look, this is your free pass. Unfortunately, if we keep getting false alarms, and we have to attend your residence or your business, then, you know, we'll have to issue violation tickets, and so that's why we have a slight increase in that area. I can go back to drugs, it's fairly quiet. Talking with my janitor section, there's always drugs everywhere, although it's a lot quieter. The trend right now is we have no one that is actively selling drugs on a regular basis. It's, some of our big users from time to time will get a little bit more and sell a little bit than they do on a bitch just using it and sell again. We have arrested and put in jail the last big players that were involved in the drug trade. The one right now that are supplying drugs are a little bit more difficult to catch because they don't have a steady pattern. One of their users and the other, their dealers, so it's very difficult to catch. The good thing is that the overall is less, therefore, our impact on the community tackling the big ones have been successful, so. Aside this, other statistics, we had 57 prisoners in our cells for two months. In terms of tickets, we wrote 50 tickets in January and 16 in a pair of total of 66 tickets in a town three to five for two months, and three in pair of chairs. Any questions?
Seems fairly comprehensive. Any questions, Council? I should add, while I have you here, again, just to extend our appreciation to the members of the detachment for your ongoing work in relation to the outlaw motorcycle gang problem that was once rather more prolific than it is now, of course, in association with the Alert Team. I've written to the Minister of Justice and received a reply regarding funding for the Alert Team, because as you're probably aware, the federal government contribution expired in 2015, and the federal government contribution, as I understand it, amounted to some 80-odd positions in addition to the provincial complement of a couple of hundred. So that 80-odd number of officers would have been valuable for communities like ours and others. And so the minister's response was essentially appreciation for support of the Alert Team, but also an undertaking to, in the context of their review, to work with the federal government to try to reinstate predictable funding for the program in Alberta, and as well from the provincial side to see what can be done to ensure the longevity of the program. So I wanted to pass that on, and again, thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Yes, and last, last note, I didn't receive a transfer list. It is official.
Oh, no.
Yes, I am transferring to Edmonton, yes. So it was official last Thursday, and so.
Well, that's a disappointment, I have to say. So let me take this opportunity to commend you, Sergeant Delisle, on your service, both to the RCMP and to Drayton Valley. Particularly during your tenure as acting staff sergeant, that was a particularly challenging time, I think, for you, for the members of the detachment, and for a new council. And it was a learning experience, I'm sure for all of us, some of us more than others. And your guidance, your professionalism helped us enormously in getting through that problem, dealing with it effectively, and working with other agencies, I guess managing it in a way that other communities have not been quite as successful.
Yes, no, thank you very much, and I enjoyed working with you, with Council. Drayton Valley is an awesome community. Every day, we feel the support from the community, from Council, from everybody. It's a player of the police here. We had big challenges at one point at the bike visit and whatnot, and we came through, and that was not just done with yours, it was done with everybody, because we have support from the community. I've learned a lot, and I would have liked to have the staff sergeant available. Knowing that, I would really like it, but, well, it's, that's for another discussion, but I will be missing you though.
And we will miss you. Thank you. All right, item 6.0 is public time. It's time for members of the public to make any comments, express concerns, provide commendations. Nope. Seeing none, move on to item 7.0, the decision items. 7.2, Counselor Nato, request for temporary road closure for the 2016 triathlon.
Thank you, Mayor. The organizing committee for the 5th Annual Drayton Valley Triathlon presented a request to Council earlier this morning to approve the closure of roads for vehicular traffic during the course of the triathlon event on May 7, 2016. The request is for Council to allow the temporary closure and barricading of streets immediately surrounding the Rotary Park, as well as the streets being used to access trails as shown on the attached map. Specifically, Council is being asked to approve the temporary closure from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. of 51st Avenue between 49th Street and 48th Street, 52nd Avenue between 49th Street and 48th Street, 48th Street between 51st Avenue and 55th Avenue, 55th Avenue between 48th Street and 43rd Street, 55th Avenue to Meyer Avenue, 43rd Street between 55 Ave. and 50th Avenue, 50th Avenue between 43rd Street and Range Road 73, and Beckett Road between 50th Avenue and 49th Avenue. The intended road closures are being proposed to ensure the safety of the athletes participating in the triathlon. Administration recommends that the closures of 50th Avenue be limited to the westbound lane only, as the only point of egress from the residences along the north side of 50th Avenue, including the Glendale subdivision and the Rivers condominiums, is via 50th Ave. Therefore, I move that Council approves the temporary street closures of barricading and barricading of 51st Avenue and 49th Street, 48th Street, 52nd Avenue between 49th Street and 48th Street, 48th Street between 51st Avenue and 55th Avenue, 55th Avenue between 48th and 43rd, 55th Avenue to Meyer Avenue, 43rd Street between 55th Avenue and 50th Avenue, 50th Avenue between 43rd and Range Road 73 westbound lane only, and Beckett Road between 50th Avenue and 49th Avenue on May 7, 2016, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Thank you, Counselor Nato. I have to admit, I couldn't keep track with all the. Yeah, if you could repeat that, please. Thank you for that motion. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Fredrickson?
I just have one question. Last year, I believe, the route changed from the years previous, and I was just wondering how was it received by the residents that live in these areas?
Does administration have any feedback in that regard?
As far as I know, we had no feedback. There were a couple that were concerned about getting out of the driveway, but they were allowed out, like, thanks to the Rotary Park. But other than that, nobody complained, nobody.
Very good. Thanks. Any further discussion? Counselor Long?
Not a question here, I just wanted to say how much I'm looking forward to this year's event. Missed it last year for unforeseen circumstances, I guess, but it's a great way to get out, get a little exercise, a little fresh air, feel good about yourself. If I can do it, I'm 53, I'm fat, I'm diabetic, and I have sciatica, then you can do it too. So I challenge the rest of the community to show up and have some fun. So as you can see, it's a pretty high-level event.
Any further comments? Questions?
Do you have anything to add?
To Counselor Long? You're absolutely welcome. Yeah.
I think it is truly a triathlon, I don't care, a triathlon is not for anybody to be able to accomplish, because you have a tri distance, you have a triathlon, so it can be done. The reason why we would like both sides of 50th Avenue is because we are doing laps, so we have to have two directions, and it is only two lanes or two shoulders in that area. We would also like to run something called a draft legal race, which would require for 20 or 30 minutes a complete closure of 50th Avenue, because, again, they have to come down one side, go up the other, and the kids would be coming in a pack, so they would not be running in one lane. That is a race that we have been asked by the triathlon association to host, for the young riders who are learning how to race, to prepare for national level races, and possibly a lot of things that are going to happen. So those would be kids coming up calibrating for a tier, and to do that race, and if we take across the length of 20 to 30 minutes, it's not going to be long. And I mean, there is a expectation that because of this, it is laps, there will be a lot of people in that race. Just have to see what happens.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Sorry, Counselor Shuler, did you have a question?
Yeah, just if you, because in the motion, it's westbound lane only on 50th Avenue, so you're actually requesting all of 50th Avenue be shut down, then?
Yes, we would like the, I mean, obviously, if people are coming out of driveways and you have nowhere to go, we would let them go at an appropriate moment. But people should be able to go around for that few hours, and at least for that half hour.
I actually, I notice in the backgrounder, as Counselor Nato was reading the motion, it doesn't refer to westbound lane only. Where? In the, not in the backgrounder, in the motion, it refers to westbound lane only. Where are we? What? Oh, yeah, sorry, there it is, yeah, in the backgrounder. Okay, so I guess, thank you for the clarity. At the end of the day, we're only asking for the westbound lane to be closed, but we're going to be using the whole road? I'm not clear.
Yeah, I was going to be impressed that we downed both lanes. I'm not sure where, I mean, I think the idea for the, was to control the other lane so that people could get out if necessary. I'm not sure where that motion came from. I'm not sure where that whole half the road came from.
Might have been last year's. What is the recommendation from administration? Is the recommendation that that section of 50th Avenue be closed in its entirety until noon? Or, Mr. Diven?
Just for clarity, Mr. Mayor, yes, the organizing committee did make the request for all of 50th to be closed. So just drawing your attention to the map, the reason administration was only recommending the westbound lane is for the residences that are on the north side of 50th Avenue, particularly those on 52nd Avenue, 51st Avenue, as it connects to 38th Street. There is only one way in and out of those areas. So a full closure of the road between 7:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m., which was the request, effectively strands the residences for that period of time, as well as could make it problematic if there was ever a need for emergency services to attend. So hence, our recommendation to Council for the one-lane closure that would still allow access if need be on the eastbound lane for that purposes. Given the timeframe and the fact that it's the majority of the day, that was part of why our motion, our recommendation to Council for this treatment. Certainly, it's Council's prerogative to close the entire length of 50th Avenue for that period of time. There would, we would though then need to insist that there do be the ability and onsite attendance, should there be the need, from the Ring Road on 38th Street and possibly off of Beckett as well, so that should needs emerge, that emergency services or other egress out for residences could still be accommodated, particularly in those areas.
And then, yes, I think we have a convention planned without volunteers, basically posted at each spot that have direct traffic out as needed at the same time, and always emergency vehicles.
So again, just for clarity, the motion as read, including westbound lane only on that section of 50th Avenue, that's correct as far as administration is concerned? Yeah, okay. All right, anything further? You look like you.
Well, yeah, I think we should look at accommodating what they actually require, which would be all of 50th to be closed, with the condition that, you know, residents in Glenbow or on, you know, Beckett Road in that short stretch, you know, be allowed, you know, the egress, as well as, of course, any emergency vehicles. To me, it would be a given as well, but.
Right. I think, though, what I'm hearing from administration is that the motion Is the recommendation that that section of 50th Avenue be closed in its entirety until noon? Or Mr. Diven?
Just for clarity, Mr. Mayor, yes, the organizing committee did make the request for all of 50th to be closed. So just drawing your attention to the map, the reason administration was only recommending the westbound lane is for the residences that are on the north side of 50th Avenue, particularly those on 52nd Avenue, 51st Avenue, as it connects to 38th Street. There is only one way in and out of those areas. So a full closure of the road between 7:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m., which was the request, effectively strands the residences for that period of time, as well as could make it problematic if there was ever a need for emergency services to attend. So hence, our recommendation to council for the one-lane closure that would still allow access, if need be, on the eastbound lane for that purposes. Given the timeframe and the fact that it's the majority of the day, that was part of why our motion, our recommendation to council for this treatment. Certainly, it's council's prerogative to close the entire length of 50th Avenue for that period of time. There would, we would though then need to insist that there do be the ability and onsite attendance, should there be the need, from the Ring Road on 38th Street and possibly off of Beckett as well, so that should needs emerge, that emergency services or other egress out for residences could still be accommodated, particularly in those areas.
And then, yes, I think we have a convention planned without volunteers, basically hosted at each spot that have direct traffic out as needed at the same time, and always emergency vehicles.
So again, just for clarity, the motion as read, including westbound lane only on that section of 50th Avenue, that's correct as far as administration is concerned? Yeah. Okay. All right. Anything further? You look like you...
Well, yeah, I think we should look at accommodating what they actually require, which would be all of 50th to be closed, with the condition that, you know, residents in Glenbow or on, you know, Beckett Road in that short stretch, you know, be allowed, you know, the egress, as well as, of course, any emergency vehicles, to me, would be a given as well, but...
Right. I think, though, what I'm hearing from administration is that the motion as currently worded accommodates that?
I'm not sure how it does.
Mr. Diven?
As currently worded, it would not meet the needs of the organizing committee, who are actually asking for the closure and controlled access to 50th Avenue for this period of time. So if council wishes to do other than the motion was there, then, you know, the suggestion would be either a friendly amendment be made to the motion by Council Nado to delete the reference to westbound lane only, or a motion to amend. But that would, the way the motion currently reads is it would only be one lane that would be closed and controlled for the purposes of the triathlon.
Right. Yeah, I think, and I think that's what Council Schuler was getting at, probably, and rather than a friendly amendment, because I think any amendment, or the amendment as contemplated would actually change the intent of the motion significantly enough, so that it is a motion to amend. Is that what you're prepared to do, Council Schuler?
Yes, I'd be prepared to do that.
To delete the words "westbound lane only" from the motion?
Yes.
Madam Secretary, have you got that? So Council Nado? Give me one second. Madam Secretary, you have... Yeah, okay. So I'm gonna back up. We've got a motion to amend. I'm gonna take discussion on the motion to amend. And now, Councilor Nado.
Seven years, it's Nado, not NATO, guys.
Nado, I'm sorry.
Geez.
They do, Nado. I don't know.
Kills me. I guess I can appreciate the safety factor of this. Obviously, that's the number-one priority. I guess my only concern is every other area of this map has another access point, whereas this is the only area on the map that literally, that's the only entrance in. And there's a lot of residents in there, and to, I don't know how they feel about us blocking them in entirely for the day and saying, oh...
They're not locked in entirely for the day.
Right.
They will be allowed to leave or come back in. It's just that we need to control them.
Right. At safety points, I understand that. I'm just wondering, how was that handled last year? Like, what do you do to go out to that neighborhood to say, this is what's coming forward?
Last year, I had delivered to every house where the roads were completely blocked around Rory Park, and noticed this day, all this data at this time, the roads aren't blocked, you are allowed out and in, emergency vehicles are allowed out and in, at our, not...
At your discretion.
At our discretion.
Their discretion. Okay. And they were, in those, like, that wasn't Glenbow, but that was those areas. How were community members feeling about that?
I never heard anything back.
Okay.
I did deliver, and most of people said they hated living around Rory Park, because there's always stuff going on around Rory Park. It's kind of like, well, there's good and bad, right? You know, they can live by the park and so on. There are issues in that area, but nobody complained.
So...
And we could do the same for Glenbow. Yeah, we'll do the same. Like, we'll put buses all the way down for all residents of the whole area that we're closing, so that they're aware that the road will be closed at this time. They will be allowed access or egress as needed.
I'd suggest that notices along, so that would be the north side of 50th Avenue in that section of the road, including Glenbow, that would be a must.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it was well-controlled last year, and there wasn't a problem with the residents and stuff.
Okay. Okay. Council Frederiksen?
Yeah, that was the comment I was gonna say, that even if it is only the westbound lane, don't you just have people controlling access anyways? Because people are gonna be going on to the route, whether it's west or east, like...
Yes. What we would want them to do would be to come out and go down to the Ring Road, because if we send them towards town, we have kids on bikes coming up to the lights that see Anthony's on the corner and turning left, so that means they will be going across the road of kids on bikes.
Right. So I think the intent of Council Schuler's amending motion is to just give greater control for traffic flow. Anything further on this motion to amend? All right. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. And so, we are back to Council Nado's motion as amended. Any further discussion on that? All right. All in favor? That is carried. Madam Secretary, you got everything I just did there? Thank you. Very good. Thank you all. Item 7.3, Councilor Long, implementation of a tax installment payment plan for the town of Greaton Valley. I'll take this opportunity to hearken back to my first term on council between 1998 and 2001, where I first advocated for this, so I'm delighted to see that we're moving apace with this development. Council Long?
The wheels of progress grind slowly. Thank you. The proposed tax installment payment plan program and associated documents have been prepared by administration at the direction of council. This program offers automatic withdrawal of payment through the taxpayer's financial institution toward their property tax account with the town of Greaton Valley. Following a review of the attached bylaw and program material by legal council, administration has determined that all necessary administrative procedures are in place to proceed with the program. Council is being asked to adopt the attached bylaw to establish the town of Greaton Valley Tax Installment Payment Plan. Therefore, I move that council give first reading to the attached Tax Installment Payment Plan bylaw 2016-02-F.
Thank you, Council Long. Any discussion on this motion? Might have been more appropriate for me to leave my remarks to this point in time, but Council Long?
Yeah, I'm glad to see this one come forward. I think we all know how folks are struggling out there at the moment, and this perhaps goes some small way towards taking the pressure off that one big bill at the end of June, so it's a little thing that we can do, so I'm glad that we're doing it.
Very good. Council Bussert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to comment that the installment plan is for taxes to be paid in the future, for the year ahead, not for a bill that you've received June 1st for the previous year. So it will help people make payments for the year ahead, and so that when that bill comes in the following spring, you have a credit with the town to apply your payments to. So it will be helpful for people to make monthly installments for their taxes in the year ahead.
Thank you very much. Any further comments? Questions? All right. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Item 7.4, Councilor Bussert, Park Valley Pool Policies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. New swimming pool legislative standards adopted by Alberta Health Services require the adoption of a lifeguard ratio policy and a diving policy for the Park Valley Pool. Pool administration has created the attached two policies for formal adoption. Park Valley Pool is working toward compliance in all policies and legislated structural improvements by the deadline date of November 30, 2017. Attached guard ratio policy and diving policy are hereby presented for council's review and consideration. I therefore recommend that council approve the attached lifeguard ratio policy.
All right. Yeah, so we'll have two separate motions here. We have the first motion before us. Any discussion on that motion? Council Frederiksen?
I was just gonna ask, what is the change to the former? Or did we not have a, like, I know that there was guidelines, I'm not sure if it was actually in a policy, but what are the, what's the difference?
There had always been procedures implemented at the Park Valley Pool, but they were never documented as true policy, so we're making sure that we're bringing our policies and standards up to current standards.
Thank you. Anything further? All right. Call the question. All in favor? That is carried. Council Bussert?
I also recommend that the town council approve the attached diving policy.
Thank you, Council Bussert. Any questions on this? Council Nado?
Thank you. I just want to comment. I do note in here that it's the difference of 2.5 to 2.4 meters in the new policy, and it's unfortunate, because obviously, you can't dig a pool a little bit deeper in our community, but I do appreciate how it's viewed in terms of, because this would have been completely detrimental to the swim clubs and the lifeguard association and all of those things. Moving forward, we would no longer really have a club at all and wouldn't be able to host any of the swim meets, so that's, I appreciate there's, I wouldn't say flexibility, but there's some point referenced in here about that in the policy, because it's such an important feature in it. And it's not something that we can, like I said, just do, is dig the pool a little bit deeper to accommodate that. That's unrealistic, so I appreciate that there's, it's been noted in here to move forward with the existing clubs.
Thank you. Anything further on this? All right, Council Frederiksen?
I just have a question. So it had noted, November 30, 2017 is the deadline date of some sort. What happens to this particular policy passed at November 30th date? So has this been back and forth with Red Cross or, I don't, Life Saving Society or whatever, in terms of, are we still gonna be able to dive as a swim club and stuff past that November 30, 2017 date?
The answer is yes, we can still continue on with this policy. So there are certain standards Alberta Health Services has implemented. These are not the only two. So there are a number of deadlines that we have to meet with respect to even some of the structural changes within the pool, and that's been recommended through Alberta Health Services. These two policies are just things that we know that we need to implement now in order to secure our program with respect to the swim clubs, so we've implemented them at this point in time. It just means our deadline to have implemented these policies would have been November 30, 2017. But in the end, we're working on two other policies, and we're also looking at some changes within, again, just the filtration system that are required through Alberta Health Services. That has a deadline of November 30, 2017.
Thank you. Anything further? All right. All in favor? That is carried. Thanks very much. 8.0, Department Reports. 8.1, Engineering and Development. Planning and Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good morning, everyone. With regard to current planning, since last council meeting, March 9, Planning and Development has approved three development permit and one business license. Three development permit include demolition of mobile home, property located at 5309 52 Street. Number two is detached garage, property located at 47142 Avenue. Installation of signage, property located at 493055th Avenue. And one business license include renovating company. With regard to long-range planning, last week on March 22, Planning and Development has meeting, had a meeting with the consultant regarding 50th Street ASP, and yesterday, we have received the draft plan for review based on earlier comments provided by the Planning and Development. And now Planning and Development is reviewing the draft plan and provided comments to consultant soon. And the next step, hopefully, the draft plan will be circulated for internal review by last week of April next month. That's all for report for today.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Shahid? All right. Sustainability? Do we have Dinette?
Sorry, she's not here at the moment, so I'll just briefly speak.
Certainly.
Not a lot to report, just her movie nights over at Bryant's Coffee House, showing sustainability movies is going very well. And that's pretty much it. Of course, she's involved in all her usual women in leadership and all that sort of stuff. So that's pretty much it for sustainability. I'm sorry.
Did you have anything to comment regarding engineering?
Yeah, a few comments regarding engineering. Bill Adams and the consultant, ISL, had a very successful presentation at the recent conference in Banff with water utilities operators. Got a lot of positive feedback, and that was a presentation about the new water treatment plant from an operator's perspective. As far as public works concerned, they've, after the recent snowfall, they've recommencing the gravel sweeping, and so they'll be hitting it very hard over the next two to three weeks. And that's pretty much it.
Any word on when the extension of 43rd Avenue to the Ring Road is likely to recommence? Some work, of course, was done in the fall.
Right. I suspect it will be June approximately, and probably likely complete by end of August, early September.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Fraser? No? Very good. Thank you. 8.2, Community Services and FCSS. Ms. Treson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I have a list of dates I'm going to call out, and these are events and activities coming up within the next few months. Starting off with April 13 is the Volunteer Appreciation Night in Banquit, so if you have not yet picked up your tickets, they're only $10. If you belong to an organization, and I'm sure everybody within this room belongs to at least one volunteer organization, and you want to pay tribute to your volunteers, please pick up some tickets for your organization. We're also accepting, of course, any photos from any of those organizations as part of the slideshow. Entertainment is by Danny Hooper, and I'm sure everybody is well-versed on what a fun night that always is. April 21 is a forum for the arts and culture community happening at the Curling Rink, and it's an opportunity for people involved with the arts and culture community to come together and talk about how they can actually start to work towards a unified voice within our community. So very positive notice from, again, a community-driven initiative. April 23 is the Little Rascals Garage Sale and Craft Fair, and again, just trying to build on some of the interests that people see in terms of the common things that normally come together. But again, with the economic climate being what it is, I think that it is a good opportunity for those people with young families. The Little Rascals Garage Sale is always a good success and a good resource for them. The Pro Rodeo happening April 29 and 30. Of course, the Pro Rodeo goes that entire weekend. Starts off, however, with a chili cook-off, and so teams are being requested to compete in the chili cook-off, which takes place on the 29th, and there is, in addition to the Pro Rodeo, trade show, again, with theme of rodeo western, that is happening on the 30th from 10 to 3. So it'll be a busy weekend at the Amoplax and the MCC. May 7, of course, you've heard about the triathlon, and so we're looking forward to good results in terms of the registrations. Registrations are now open on the Zone 4 registration site. And July 26 to 28 is the Communities in Bloom judging in the national championships, and might be more comments about that, but just to have those dates in your mind. That's my report.
Great. Thank you very much. 8.3, Emergency Services. Deputy Chief Galavan.
I'm Tom Thompson. He's on the list. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, and I'm Tom. Just giving a brief activity report for March. Our Level 1 and Level 2 firefighters completed their provincial practical exams and written exams. Their success is waiting for the exams to come back. But everybody did pretty well, we figure. We completed five fire inspection, inspection reports on request. We completed three occupancy load... Completed three occupancy load requests as well. We have one school tour, or not school tour, fire department tour from the girl guys came to visit our station. All of March, we have been preparing for wildland fire season, we're expecting a fairly busy season with the lack of moisture. Reports from SRD, forestry is insane, so we're preparing for that. We've been fairly active with issuing or denying fire permits. New system, online system, so it's pretty much it.
We appreciate the department's efforts to be ready, but we hope you're not busy this summer. Council Bossert.
Good morning, thank you for coming in. With the dry grass conditions that we are already facing here, not even at the beginning of April, can any landowners, be it urban or rural, do anything on their property to make their property less vulnerable to grass fires?
Absolutely, and we put these, our public announcements in the papers regarding that. We can make sure their tree limbs are trimmed up and leaves raked up and that type of thing. Absolutely.
Anything further? All right, thank you very much. Eight point four, Under Administration, Communications and Marketing, Tyler Russell. Tyler seems different today.
Lovely.
Welcome, Jen.
To exciting things today. Tyler and I are happy to announce that we have finally made over 8,000 mark on our app.
Very good.
Also, as of this week, we're at 1,004. So 744 on iPhone and 260 on Android, and we have just over 1,200 updates. So lots of people downloading it, maybe deleting it, going back to it, and then updating it every year. And secondly, our branding, it's going well. This week, the working group had a conference call with Cosent, and they presented a few different logos to us, and we are, as I said, we have to be, as I mentioned, during the next week, to be giving a presentation to the Housewives as well.
Very good. Any questions? Council Bossert.
Good morning, Jen. I'm not sure if you can answer this as it was from Mr. Russell last council. He was working on an improved design for the events calendar for our website. Can you tell us if there's been any progress on that project?
We have it for that, from what Jennifer just had, it is in progress. We have the research, we have our calendars, just trying to make people use our button. We have it, we're like, oh, that is not, we're trying to make improvements for that.
Anything further? All right, thanks so much. And our CAO report, Mr. Dibbin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good morning, Council. Just a few items to report on today. As a part of the intermunicipal cooperation agreement with Brazzo County, there is a contemplation of a five-year review that has a number of stages to it. That review is to be completed in this calendar year. So toward that, I met with my counterpart earlier in March, on March the 10th, for the administration review, following discussions internal to the administration of the town. At that meeting, we both reviewed our internal reviews and with each other, we do not have any substantive changes or elements that we are recommending changes to, or rather, just some housekeeping, some updating of references of other documents and other plans underneath the intermunicipal cooperation agreement. Those housekeeping and refresh items are being formulated into a revised draft that will be then forwarded to each council respectively here in the coming weeks, so that both the councils of Brazzo County as well as the town can review those aspects, and we can undertake and complete the required review elements before the end of the calendar year. A number of meetings that I've been able to participate in over the last few weeks, notably Council Retreat, some other committee meetings as well. Was very pleased to be a part of the meeting with the County of Camrose and my CAO counterpart on March 18th, as they came to Drayton Valley to visit some of our facilities, the Biomile, the CETC. And that was very nice to see, and I think that was actually as a result of some recent activity and participation in courses in the community of Camrose, both on the part of administration and council members as well. So it was nice to have them in the community. And as well as just to advise council that significant amount of activity, particularly from corporate services, but really affecting all of administration in the past month or so as we get to the completion of year-end statements, audit, as well as diligently working as our review and the ongoing charges that council has given administration following the passage of the interim budget, to look at our capital plan on costings, on the ever-continuing desire for efficiencies and maximizing the use of public dollars. So we're continuing those efforts and looking toward bringing a finalized budget to council for their review, hopefully approval by the end of April. So with that, I will conclude my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Mr. Dibbin? All right, we'll move on to Council Reports. Council Bossert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had a fairly busy last three weeks. On February 29th, on behalf of Councilor Long, I attended the Drayton Valley Community Foundation. Good amount of discussion regarding the planning of DV 100. Of course, that's a big event for our community, and planning is well on its way, and registration has already started. There was also conversation about the transition of ownership for the Northwest Building. New partner is yet to be finalized, so, but it is coming along. March 7th, we were able to, I was able to attend the Workplace Wellness Workshop. It had great presenters and great breakout sessions. Our main speaker was Clint Malarchuk, I believe is how to pronounce his last name, with an amazing story, personal fortitude and overcoming, personal struggles in his life. The focus, of course, was on mental health and mental wellness, and I felt considering the economic downturn in our community, it was a very timely event. In fact, even that day, I had to go attend the mental health issues of my pregnant daughter, so was only able to attend part of the conference, but it was an excellent presentation. March 8th, I attended the Drayton Valley Resettlement Group. This is a group of individuals in the community who are pursuing bringing refugee families into our area, and at this point, we are very close to actually having a list before us of families that we may be able to select to come into our community. That in itself will be a three to six-month process, however. March 11th to 13th was our Council Retreat with Mrs. Margaret Bateman. And as always, our retreats with Margaret are very helpful for establishing vision for our council and helping us to move forward in challenging times. March 14th was our Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Strategy Team meeting. We are again focusing on an event called Chilling in Drayton Valley, which is an outdoor camping overnight in the rough event to raise awareness for homelessness in our area. And we're hoping to have that event in concert with some of our high schools sometime in May. March 16th, I attended the Cultural Sustainability Workshop at Augustana in Camrose. It was the first workshop of its type in Canada, and we found that the word cultural is a very difficult word to define, but the perspective of those that attended was very encouraging and enlightening and well-encompassing of some of the, and good example, good examples were risen of what other communities are doing as far as cultural sustainability, and Drayton Valley also has great initiatives on the way. And on March 18th, I attended the Waste Management Meeting. We are working on direction policies and continue to move forward on some of the directives that we have established as priorities for council. And I believe that that is my meeting for, my report for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Bossert. Council Frederiksen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. March 7th, I too attended the Workplace Wellness Conference, and one of the breakout sessions I was able to go to was a mindfulness presentation. And I believe the presenter was out of Edmonton or Red Deer, and it was an excellent presentation. And in fact, she had said, our ability, the human's ability to focus now, the way our technology and stuff is, has been reduced to about seven seconds before we are, you know, squirrel. A goldfish's ability to focus is nine seconds. I thought that was kind of an interesting fact, and I'm trying to make a better effort to finish one thing before I move on to the next.
Sorry to interrupt. Did they say what the baseline number was?
I didn't delve into, I didn't stop during the presentation to delve into the research behind it, but.
If it used to be eight seconds, then we're not doing so bad. Somehow I don't.
I thought it was 10. I think she said 10.
Okay, sorry to interrupt. Please continue.
And then, March 10th, I attended the Brazu Seniors Foundation Meeting, and attached for information items is the 2015 financial statements. Brazu Seniors Foundation is, is very healthy. However, one thing that was a discussion, and has been a continued discussion at each of our meetings, is that there is a vacancy, an increase in vacancy rate in the lodge as well as the wishing well. And essentially, it was, we were, you know, looking at what asset Drayton Valley has in terms of their senior care. And, and I think in some cases, it was more of, I don't want to say educating the public, but people don't really know what level of care you can get at the Shangala Lodge versus the wishing well versus Sunrise Villages, yeah, the private, yeah. So, so we are talking about ways in which, you know, to bring people into Shangala Lodge to family members to get a sense of the community and how it, how it is there, and, you know, making that place home for some of our, our senior population. As Council Bossert mentioned, March 12th to, I believe, the, March 12th, 11th to the 13th was Council Retreat, so we did set strategic direction for the coming year. March 14th, I was sitting at the, I was able to sit in at the Clean Energy and Technology Center meeting, and lots of exciting things that are happening with that, under the four pillars that the Clean Energy Technology Center umbrellas. Yeah, mind-boggling, because there's just so much stuff. And the industry itself, that bio industry and that clean energy industry is such a developing industry that, that it's hard to keep up even to that on a regular basis. March 18th, I too attended the Waste Management Committee meeting, and Council Bossert had spoke to that. Currently, we do not have an overarching waste management policy, and that is something that as councilors, we are directed to do, is to look at policy and, and set that vision for our community. So that is something that under the Waste Management Committee, we are really looking at as to, given our sustainability plan, our social development plan, you know, what we have for waste management, what our landfill life cycle is, and where do we want to go from there. So that's one of our important tasks that we're currently doing. And March 21st, I attended the Healthy Communities Coalition meeting, and you had had the presentation this morning from Lola and Dr. Unger? Oh, she wasn't able to make it. Okay. So there's, pardon?
This afternoon.
Oh, is it this afternoon? Oh, sorry, I thought it was a presentation here. Anyways, the Healthy Community Coalition, they have a lot going on. They're, within it, there's about three or four different subcommittees that are working on different things. So one of the things that Mrs. Strand is going to be talking about is research undertaking by Dr. Unger, looking at our boom-bust economy and how that does relate to our mental health of our community members and our families. Another thing that they're looking at is a drug and alcohol policy, or alcohol policy based on what, what does other communities have, what kind of supports do we have for our, for our community, et cetera. So it's a, it's a very, that's another very aggressive, very happening group, so I'm happy to be a part of that. And that is my report.
Thank you very much. Council Nado, how's that?
Yeah, excellent. Thank you, Mayor. I would comment to Communities in Bloom, however Riley was sick that day, so I was not able to attend that meeting, so otherwise, that was news to me on the date. I will comment, other than the other ones, Councilors already commented, that I did attend in Council Schuler's absence, the Sustainability Committee meeting, and there were several discussion items. The mayor was also able to attend that day as well. We did review the terms of reference and revamped it. The previous terms of reference was in making of our previous, our most recent sustainability plan, so they were no longer really relevant to the community, or to the committee at this time. So we've reworked that, and I assume those will be coming forward at our next council meeting. We also discussed a community member who would like to do a community greenhouse and what that would look like in, in the area, and an initiative. Talked about the GHG Plan Update. Ms. Muller informed the committee that the first milestone has been presented to council, and was mentioned at the FCM Sustainability Conference, which was really nice to hear. So we got a little spotlight there as well on that, which I understand that Ms. Muller will be speaking with Tyler and Jen about a little bit more information in the media about that honor, because that's a big deal. Also talked about a couple other initiatives, and she also had her first vermicompost course and took great success on March 15th. So it was quite successful, and next time she'll be looking at doing a questionnaire so she can get more of a community feedback on improvements and so on. Also talked about solar open house that will be happening at CETC, and that, that's an event CETC will be putting on, and that she's helping organize. And I had mentioned while I was vacationing that I came across what was called Innovation Hangar within San Francisco, and it's a former airline hangar that is now an innovation center, and they have what you can do for small entrepreneur ideas, but there were environmental ideas there, there was a 3D printer there that communities can use, community members can use. So for entrepreneurship and sustainability, it was both hand-in-hand, so I shared some of that information previously with our Economic Development Committee, and I also shared it with the Sustainability Committee as well. So that would be the sustainability meeting. I also attended the Legacy Meeting, and I just want to say this group is phenomenal as always. I'm so impressed when so many organizations can come together under one project and initiative and really just own it. There was, well, we, we owned a few things as well, but it was really great to see. They're all very task-driven. There are some things we're looking at getting proposals on companies that can do the digitization of the former Western Revues, and to date, we are only missing, of all of them, we think, for.
Four months.
Four months in total, from the beginning to now, which is unbelievable. That's really, so the Historical Society is looking to see if maybe they have it hidden in their basement somewhere, and if not, they will be doing a call-out to the community to see if anyone may have them in their basements at their home, and if not, then we'll have the complete category of all the Western Revues in Drayton Valley was, since its inception. So that's really great. So we're working on that, and we're working on doing a PowerPoint presentation. Council Schuler put together one. We're just going to add a couple logos and add some pictures to additional pictures, and then we'll be presenting those to all the user groups that are like-minded in terms of heritage and seeing if they want to come forward. I believe they'll be going forward to the county as well and asking for funds requested. But it was a great meeting, and we're looking forward to proceeding. We're, we are well underway.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Councilor Long.
Thank you. Busy couple of weeks. I'm going to start at the end, because it follows up to what Nicole has just been talking about with the legacy project, just for clarification, in case anybody at home or listening can help us out here. What we are missing, as far as the historical newspapers is concerned, is August to December 1965. They're not in the Western Review archives, they're not in the provincial archives, they're not anywhere. At that time, the paper had been sold and changed its name to the Drayton Valley Banner. It reappears in early 1966 as the Drayton Valley Western Review. So quite what happened in there, we believe it was still published, but if anybody has a pile of papers sitting at home, might be going to have a look. Again, that's August to December 1965 appears to be the gap that, that we'd love to fill, and then the archive is complete going back to the earliest Pemden News advertiser was in 1956, so to the present day. So moving. So moving back to the beginning of the, of my report, if you cast your minds back, three weeks, we had a visit from a woman, I think her name was Melissa Sinclair, talking about walkability to the Clean Energy and Technology Center. So the very next day, since we had a reason to go there, Councilor Schuler and myself walked to the Clean Energy and Technology Center. The answer is it's half an hour from 7-Eleven door-to-door, so very doable on a nice summer day, perhaps less so on a cold winter day, but it's certainly something that, it's not beyond the realms of possibility. Again, I point out, I'm 53 years old with sciatica, so it's, you know, it's walkable. I'm getting that one in. The, had a CETC meeting, which Council Fredrickson's already mentioned and that, but Councilor Schuler will fill us in a little bit more on, I think it was the 14th. On the 15th, and this was interesting, the Drayton Valley Community Foundation had a special meeting with a fellow who came out from the Edmonton Community Foundation. They obviously manage a significantly larger sum of money than we have in town and have instituted, and I think this happened a few years back, a program where they take a chunk of their money and invest it locally. That's to say they, rather than putting it in Wall Street or Bay Street to generate interest, they will invest it in actually anywhere in Alberta with rather looser rules than you'd get a bank loan for. So what it's available for is charities and nonprofits and things like that and they have a fair sum of cash if anybody in that sector is looking for an alternative source of funding. They do charge interest, but not much more than the bank rate, something to look at. And the thought was that we could perhaps begin doing that in Drayton Valley also. So the, the foundation has an investment committee that will be looking at that moving forward. Obviously a smaller sum, but a chance, if we get the money and keep it in town, it makes a difference and can help to grow the economy a little bit. On the 17th, had a branding meeting that's already been discussed. I think it's this coming Monday, Council will get a chance to look at the work that's been going on there. I think it's this Monday, yeah. On the 18th, we did, this has been mentioned already, have almost the entire Camrose City Council and their CAO out for a tour of mainly the Clean Energy and Technology Center. Also had a look around the Fibre Map Plant, a nice to see that doing well. That's been going now for seven or eight years, but it is a genuine local success story and a business that's still continuing to prosper in this tough economy, so that's a positive, I guess. On the 21st, we had the regular meeting of the Community Foundation and the only other thing was the Legacy Project meeting, which I touched on at the beginning, so that's my report.
All right. Thank you very much. Not to belabor things that have been identified too much. Oh, sorry, oh, Councilor Schuler's not even here on the list. Oh, because we didn't anticipate you'd be here. Sorry about that. Councilor Schuler.
Thank you. Yeah, originally I indicated I probably would not be at this meeting, so they assumed I would not be here, which was at the time, a good assumption, but things change. I have a very brief report as my other employment has taken me away for the majority of the time between the last council meeting and today, so I'm not going to touch on much other than, I will make just a few comments on the CETC meeting on 14th of March. Councilor Fredrickson gave a very good description on, you know, what's been taking place. It has been a very busy area over the last couple months. There were numerous education and training opportunities that are being looked at. Every, everything from webcasts to clean energy and renewable energy programs, personal development, safety training, various courses from other educational entities, First Nations and some bio products as well, as well as looking at areas, you know, in the business development, applied research and R&amp;D, different things from solar power to manufacturing, just going down the list here real quick. Some various workshops in regards to clean energy. Two things we can't talk about. Some local companies looking at doing some amazing initiatives. Yeah, it, a lot of this is still highly confidential and, you know, so we can't give a lot of detail on, but there, there is a lot that is being looked at and going on and hence why we're bringing forward another CETC meeting a little bit sooner than what would originally or normally be planned. So things are moving along very well that way. And the only other one that, just a quick touch on since most of councilors, as I mentioned, is, was the council retreat. I, I found it a very productive retreat. In the past, we've, we've had some good retreats and, you know, come up with some good planning and good direction. I think this one was, was probably one of the best that I've seen since I've been on council. I think council's headed in a very good direction and it was definitely worth, well worthwhile. So I'm hoping that I'm going to be around for the next little while. I know I've got a few days next week that I will be out of town, but other than that, so far, my plan is to be around for virtually all of April, so we'll get back into things and hopefully have a much more detailed report for next time.
Excellent.
That's all I have.
Thanks very much. March 7th, I too was pleased to attend and open the Workplace Wellness Conference with guest speaker Clint Malarchuk. The conference course was organized by members of the Healthy Communities Coalition and it, it will, it served as yet another testament to the, to the good work that that body is doing in the community. So we look forward to the other things that Council Fredrickson has identified coming up. March 9th through 11th, sorry, 9th and 10th, I was in attendance at the AUMA Spring Mayor's Caucuses where we heard from different ministers of, of the provincial government and receiving updates on where they are in their different portfolios and so there'll be more coming from that as, as time goes on. The, of particular interest to us, of course, was the discussions surrounding the municipal government act review and timing of release of amendments. Currently, we're expecting it to be roughly the last week of session, whenever that may be, we think it's late May, early June. Beyond that, of course, I was able to come back on for March 11th and very pleased to open the Pee-wee Provincial Tournament here hosted by Drayton Valley Minor Hockey and my compliments to Drayton Valley Minor Hockey for pulling off a first-class event. Very pleased at that and my hope and expectation is that those who came from out of town were suitably impressed with what Drayton Valley has to offer. Of course, I too attended the retreat later that day and over the course of the next two days. The 14th of March, I attended the Northern Alberta Mayor's and Reeves Caucus hosted by Mayor Iverson in Edmonton. The, sorry, yeah, me, I was back later that day for the Mayor's Advisory Committee in which we undertook a rising out-of-questions for members of the committee. We undertook a tour of the Clean Energy Technology Center and entertained questions and hopefully that was edifying for the members of the committee. The 17th, I was fortunate enough to get a meeting with the Minister of Health, Sarah Hoffman, to discuss the, it's not a town initiative, but it is important to the town, the CAT scan machine that the Drayton Valley Health Services Foundation is raising funds for, for our local hospital. The discussion centered around a commitment that was made from the previous government with regard to renovations, funding of renovations to accommodate the equipment that, for which funds are being raised. No answers, of course, on that as yet, but some of the information that was provided, they, the government was unaware of and are looking into. So we hold out some measure of hope for that. I was able to attend the Municipal Governance Committee of AUMA that same day. And the 18th, of course, participated in the visit of Camrose City Council at the Clean Energy Technology Center. That's been discussed. The Sustainability Committee meeting on the 21st. The 22nd, had a luncheon meeting with the representative of Alberta Energy and other local business participants largely surrounding the, the matter of valley power, which is a longstanding corporate citizen in Drayton Valley and the issue of the Small Power Producers' Credit, which is set to expire, has, has been predetermined for several years now to expire in, in the next two months. That Small Power Producers' Credit, of course, is critical to the, to the economic model of valley power and facilities like it. So we were trying to get some clarity and certainty on ways to move forward and keep valley power operating in the community. Apart from that, I think I'll end my report and move on to item 10.0, information items. We have 10.1, the Yellowhead Regional Library Board minutes of November 2015. 10.2, the Economic Development Committee meeting minutes for January and February 2016. 10.3, the Brazos Seniors Foundation meeting minutes for January 2016 and the financial statements for the year ended December 31st, 2015. 10.4, the Star Catholic Board highlights of March 2016. 10.5, the Waste Management Committee meeting minutes, October 2015 and February 2016. And 10.6, the RCMP statistics for February 2016. Could I get a motion to receive those items as information, please? Councilor Bossert, all in favor? That is carried. Take a motion to adjourn. Councilor Schuler, all in favor? That is carried. We are adjourned.